Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
I'm here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the council number sixty-six, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the city of Scranton to approve the designation of Third Avenue as one-way northbound from Elm Street to its intersection with Broadway Street, with the installation of two R-five dash one do-not-enter signs at the intersection of Third Avenue and Broadway Street. R-six dash one L horizontal left one-way sign shall be installed at the intersection of Third Avenue and Regan Place, Third Avenue and Fellow Street, Third Avenue and Luzern Street, and Third Avenue and Broadway Street, along with no parking designated on the Easterly side of Third Avenue from Luzern Street North to Broadway Street, and that six R-eight dash three no-parking symbol sign, four with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking arrow plaque, one with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking left arrow plaque, and one with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking right arrow plaque be installed under the direction of the city engineer to allow for improved access from Third Avenue onto Broadway Street.
At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept a public comment?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept public comment for file of the council number sixty-six, two thousand one, two thousand twenty-one. Mrs. Reed, would you please read any comments received into the record?
Thank you, Councilman Gahn. There were no comments received.
Okay, on the questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
The public hearing, or this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, all right, welcome, everybody. This is our caucus Tuesday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll get started really quick with just a couple items. So as everyone knows, Lori announced last week that she will be retiring from the clerk's position at the end of the month. We announced, or I announced last week, that we were going to accept resumes and letters of interest until the end of business today. We did receive four resumes and letters of interest. So those applicants were Natalie Walsh, Patty Fowler, Frank Voldenberg, and Caitlin McDonough. So council is going to, at this point, obviously, review the the resumes and the letters of interest, and hopefully make a decision and be able to announce something by next week, because we do need, obviously, to get a clerk in position with Mrs. Reed leaving at the end of the month. So we'll hopefully have an announcement by the meeting next week on that. In terms of the agenda tonight, we'll just run through our agenda. So five B is just a creation of a special city account for the dispersment of grant funds from the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation. I do have a couple of questions about this. One of which was, I just wanted to know how much money was in the Weston Foundation Trust? And how, about how much money does the city receive from the trust annually? Does anyone have any questions on five B other than that? Okay. The next three pieces in fifth order are all submissions of grant applications to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the D C N R. Five Cs for the Connell Park Rehab Project, five D is for the Naog Park Swim Complex project, and five E is for the Weston Park Rehab Project. So I also had a couple of questions on this. If you look at the legislation, you'll notice in each one that the the deadline for the grant application, it says it's due to D C N R, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, today's April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. It's my understanding that the the city, O E C D, has already submitted these grant applications. So I do have a question about that. If you look at the legislation, it says that we are ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city to D C N R, and I'm in favor of submitting these grant applications for all three of these projects, because that's very important. But I know that in the past, I just want to double-check. I believe council has always approved the grant, the grant application prior to it being submitted. I even know in the past, just a few months, we've received emergency legislation from the administration for grant applications in order that we approve it so that the grant can be submitted, so they don't miss the deadline. So I just want to double-check that that's kind of in line with what we've done previous to that. The second thing that I noticed in all three is that we did not receive a grant application for for any of them. So I would like to see that, because that will at least give us a breakdown of the cost, the estimates, things that are always usually included in the grant applications. And then the only other question I had was on five D with the Naog Park Swim Complex. As you know, within the past month, the consulting firm M K S D had come in twice now to council to brief us on the Naog Pool Swim Complex and all the upgrades and presented council and the city with several options. According to five D in the grant application, the city is going for looking at a six-point-two-million-dollar fix to the pool with the city committing a three-point-one-million-dollar cash match to the project. So I just want to, it's unclear by looking at the legislation which option that M K S D presented, which option the city is ultimately going with. So I would like clarification on that before next week. And then the three-point-one-million-dollar cash match, it's unclear by the legislation where that match money is coming from and how they plan on doing that. And then, you know, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is just because we're submitting the application, obviously, doesn't mean that we're going to get the grant. Hopefully, we do. But in the event that we don't get the grant or don't get the full amount, what is the the administration's plan for that? So those are my my questions and concerns with with the fifth-order pieces. Does anybody have anything else on on those?
I would, just to add, just one question on that would be, you know, more specifically for five C and five E, because we're all familiar with Naog. But are they pulling this, you know, these projects out of the parks assessment? You know, that's, you know, we're still waiting for, but, you know, some of this might be out of that, just so it's, you know, in tune to a a bigger strategy of how we're, you know, going to look at our parks going forward.
Yeah, I think Eileen said that they, we could get clarification on that, but I'm pretty sure she said that that is how they were kind of proceeding forward, was based solely off of the study. It's a good question, though.
Yeah, just because we haven't received, you know, the study, but I could see, you know, meeting the grant deadlines that you pull certain information of what, you know, what they have completed so far.
Very good.
I have the same questions that Councilman Gahn had, and the only thing on just with with five D with the Naog Pool Complex, too, I mean, if we were going with one of their plans that had a higher cost, then we would want to apply for more grant money than what we, what it seems that they applied for now. So I definitely was concerned and just wanted some more information on whether or not we chose a plan to go with, because we would like to be a part of that.
I think with that being said, I think both of you guys covered that. And I mean, we don't know the extent of the grants. Maybe with that, maybe it only goes to six. I'm not sure.
Well, I think the grant is for the grant is, the total estimated cost is six-point-two-million, and then the city's going to commit. Yeah, three-point-one, it says in the.
What I mean is, is that all that that grant go, is the grant capped at six, possibly? I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Grant. Also, with that being said, and with the park study, we did receive an email from the East Mountain Neighborhood Association about about the park on East Mountain, the Robinson Park, and that is included in the park study, correct?
Yeah, that's included in the park study. I had, I met with the neighbors up there. Geez, it was before the pandemic. And in fact, I had an email back and forth with the association president and actually missed a call from late this afternoon, because I was at work. But I had met up there with them under the previous administration, and there was talk about putting money into that park and rehabbing that park. That's a big swath of land up there. It's a beautiful, everybody knows, has been up to that park before, but it's a, it's a really beautiful location and a beautiful park, and it really is in need of of upgrade. And I know that that was part of the the study. Obviously, we haven't seen the final report yet, but I agree with you, Councilman Schuster. It definitely has to be a priority. There's a lot of children in that neighborhood up there, a lot of people that use that park.
Yeah, I have that in my queue. I started to respond to that, but I wanted to get a little bit more clarification, because we didn't get that total park study yet. I would have liked to have a little, I would have liked to have given them a little bit more info than I have at this time.
Yeah, there's, there's money in the the action plan that we're voting on tonight. I think it's a hundred and eighty-one-thousand dollars for parks, but I don't think that that part of East, I don't think any of East Mountain is in the low-to-mod income area, so we can't use that money, or the city won't be able to use that pot of money for Robinson Park. But there's always L S A money and other grant opportunities. And I, I think the last time I spoke with the mayor, they were looking at different options for that park in terms of submitting grant grant applications. So we haven't seen anything come across our desk yet, but, you know, we we should double-check with them on that, or check in again with them for an update.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else on the fifth-order items? Okay. Seventh order, just a couple of pieces that we've been talking about. So seven A is the C D B G action plan. Seven B is the Third Avenue one-way and no parking that we've been discussing now for the last few weeks, and that's what we had the public hearing on tonight. Seven C is the receipt of the asphalt roller, and then seven D and seven E are appointments. So seven D, the mayor's appointing Pedro, and as to the Trenton Sewer Authority Board, and seven E, we will have the new Parks and Recreation Director, Brooke Newhart. So does anybody have any questions or concerns on the seventh-order items?
When it comes to seven C, thanks, Kevin. Kevin, I had a question about seven C last weekend. Kevin responded me to me an email and let me know to answer that question. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Anybody else have anything in the seventh-order items? Okay. How about, I know Kyle and Tom and Mark, you guys have been working on the Orm Street. And can you just talk to, about that piece? I think we're leaving it on the table. We are leaving it on the table for tonight, and then potentially bringing it back next week or the week after, correct?
Yeah, so we, we had a meeting, what was that, almost two weeks ago, with the neighbors and also members of the PennDOT Design Team. And one of the ways they designed that corner was for a bus to take a right from North Main traveling south onto Orm Street. But since Orm Street is no longer on the bus route, you know, they weren't aware of that, because the actual name of one of the bus routes was Orm Lafayette. You know, at that point, that has since changed in the last two weeks. But we did send a letter over to PennDOT today, you know, stating that there isn't, that Orm Street isn't currently on the bus route. So they could change that design then to hopefully, you know, alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns and still get those parking spots in there.
Okay, great.
So we're just waiting, you know, for a response to them, because then that would be just an easy amendment in terms of the footage. It goes, you know, the no-parking would go back, that they'd be requesting based off their new design.
Okay, great. And thanks for taking lead on that, guys. That was very good. Okay. Kevin, do you have anything?
Nothing other than the emails that I provided, provided earlier today. I just sent an email a few minutes before we started regarding the implication of the Sunshine Act in terms of interviewing the candidates for their position of clerk. I think it's very, it's, no, it's clear under the Sunshine Act that we could hold an executive session to interview those candidates. And we'd be still, we'd be in compliance with the Sunshine Act. We just can't vote on the appointment. We'd have to vote on the appointment in a public meeting. And so that, we just, and then it says for it's what, you know, as far as the announcement requirements are for the executive session. Other than that, nothing other than what I've updated you guys by way of email today.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Kevin. Lori, do you have anything?
Thank you, Councilman Gahn. I do not have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have anything for the good of the order? We'll start with Councilman Schuster, because you're on my left in the top-hand corner.
Yeah, I think maybe in fifth order I'll bring up, I spoke with Mrs. Brani today, and I just wanted to thank her for the information she provided. I wanted to thank Lori and Kyle for the letter to PennDOT, and Kyle taking the lead on that one. And also, I wanted to thank, when we were over there speaking to the neighbors, they talked about, they spoke about possibly getting a streetlight into into the court there, that behind Main Avenue. So I did request that info from Lori, and Lori sent it over. So thank you very much, Lori, for sending that to me. And I'll get that to the, to the neighbors in that area.
Okay, very good. Councilman McAndrew?
I do, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue?
Um, I just also want to thank Kevin for helping with that letter to PennDOT. He cleaned that up for us nice before that was sent out. I don't want to not give him credit for that.
You did the lion's share.
We, myself and Mr. McAndrew also got a letter or an email last week regarding garbage on River Street. So we did pass that along to D P W. I guess the residents moved out and just threw their garbage all across on the sidewalks on River Street there. So it wasn't picked up by D P W this week, because it wasn't properly in bags, but they will be sending someone out. I got a response this afternoon. Hopefully, they'll be sending someone out tomorrow to pick that up. And also, I got a response from Mrs. Brani regarding a quality-of-life violation there. She, she also responded that an inspector will be sent out regarding that.
Okay, very good.
And that's all I have for right now.
Thanks, Kyle. And Dr. Rothschild, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I just had a few things quickly. I checked in on the Birch Street project, the paved cuts someone was asking about, because we were told that it would be fully restored, and it hadn't been yet. So it's scheduled to actually be completed tomorrow, what I received today. And I spoke with the administration regarding some complaints I received about Harrison Avenue, which I happen to live very close to, and there's been issues with the speed of traffic. And I know last year there were some additional slow slow signs placed, but that hasn't seemed to really help the issue. And there's just really poor pedestrian lines for the crosswalk, so that's been an issue. And then, excuse my, my fussy daughter here. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention, I think there's, there's been some personnel changes, just as that happens. And we had voted on on the budget at the end of last year and added additional positions. And I've been wondering where we're at with some of those positions. I know not all of them have been filled. And it's really hard to stay up to date what's happening with personnel changes in City Hall, unless it's, say, a department head that we need to vote on, then there's legislation. But if not, then we don't really know about it or get informed about it. And I wanted to send a letter to request that we receive regular personnel reports, perhaps on a monthly basis, just so we feel like we're more in the loop on council. So I hope that other council members agree with that. I mean, we could send it from, from all of council if we're in agreement on that.
Yeah, that works. Yes, because the the piece that I wanted to talk to, to say thank you to Mrs. Brani was about that exact thing. I had some complaints today from West Side, and I wasn't sure who was, was over there with inspections, and I had to reach out to find out who that was and get that contact. I also drove up through Birch Street, and it's, the road is not paved. It actually appears to be dirt at this point in time, but you can't get through there.
Yeah, and I, and I believe the reason they opened it up, you know, the way the way it was for the time being was because they were also finishing up. And I believe they'd finish up, because I don't think they were there this afternoon, but boring under Elm Street, under the railroads on Elm Street. So hopefully, that project's done, too, and, you know, full restoration could be done there, which, you know, the guy from P A American Water said was going to happen. And just on justice, too, you know, I have the same concerns, just because, you know, we got that emergency declaration over the weekend, too. I believe there's two vacancies in the I T department, and we added two position to that in the current, but, you know, in this year's budget. So I'd be in favor of that letter, too.
I'm definitely in favor of that.
Sorry, Mark, froze.
Bill has Zoom set that any time Mark speaks, it automatically. It's kind of.
I'll pick on someone different every week, next week than Kyle.
But, Bill, I could take a lead on writing that letter. I think that's a good point that Dr. Rothschild raised, because I wasn't even aware of the the, the issues with regard to the I T department. And then, like Kyle said, it just sprung up on us that we have this emergency all of a sudden, and you know, maybe if we had known about it, that there was this, you know, there was these vacancies coming that we could have better prepared for. So I'll write the letter and circulate it.
Okay, thank you. And Mark, I'm sorry, you cut off. That's why we were, you froze a little bit.
I got a good connection, too, supposedly. I, I just, I'm in favor of the letter, too, because there seems to be a lot of shuffling. I finally figure out who's where, and then they're gone, or they're moved, or I don't have, you know, a clue where they're at. And people reach out to me and say, who do I contact, and who are they? And so an updated list would be perfect.
If that list could also be inclusive of, like, impending retirements, you know, have that information, too, so we can anticipate those, those changes.
Yeah, my concern, so I actually have a few questions about the emergency declaration. So just so everyone in the public is aware, council received notice from the administration that they were issuing an emergency declaration, which was signed by the mayor and the city controller, that there was a need to hire a company, and the name of that company is Bedrock Technologies. And they were going to hire them on a monthly basis with, as far as I can see, no end date in the amount of twelve thousand, twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that is according to the emergency declaration. That is because the I T Network Systems Manager, Frank Switnicki, had resigned. And there is an open position of I T Director. And according to the emergency declaration, it's critical for operations and security that internal resources remain adequate. So they're going to hire this company, I guess, until they hire an I T Director and a Network Systems Manager. So my concern with this, obviously, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is a large amount of money. And this is very open-ended in the fact that apparently the I T Director's position has been vacant since, I think, January. So we're now, towards the end of April, going into May, there's, we still don't have an I T Director. Now, the former I T Director, who was put in this other position, Network Systems, Network Systems Manager, he resigns, and now apparently there was no cross-training done, or no one knew what he did or couldn't do what he did. So they have to hire this company now on an emergency basis. So I do have a couple of questions, just to confirm how long this I T Director position has actually been open, number one. Number two, I would like a copy of the, or council, to give a copy of, to council, of the, of the contract between the city and this Bedrock Technology Company. And also, what is the timeline here? I mean, this is, now this position's been open, apparently, since January. What I don't want, what I'm concerned about, and I don't want to see happen, is that three, four, five, six, seven months go by, and either we can't hire somebody, or they're, you know, not hiring an I T Director for whatever reason. It's a lot of money, and my concern always with these type of things is that we end up circumventing the check-and-balance role that council plays in matters like this, when maybe there's another company that would be able to provide the service at a lower cost to the taxpayers. But because of the emergency that the administration is claiming, you know, we got, we went right with this company, who, you know, according to the emergency declaration, is already doing business with the city. So I think we need a little bit of clarification on that. Carl Dealy, the Business Administrator, did provide a memo to to council and copied the mayor and the controller on it, and just, again, explained pretty much what was in the declaration. So that'll all be in third order next week for everyone's review. So if we could get those questions answered, and if anyone else has any questions on the, the emergency declaration, we can include that as well.
I just have, so the way I read it, and we just got it, got a couple of minutes ago, really. But they're going to use them on a monthly basis, but they need a month's notice to terminate. So that's the way I read it. So I mean, how long are they really going to be here?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Do we need any more clarification on the extent of the emergency? I mean, how this, you know, ties into maybe our first responders, things like that, or do we think they pretty much spilled all?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is the emergency is, because, you know, basically, you know, Frank was, you know, the guy, you know, who dealt with all of those issues in terms of the Police Department and Fire Department. So, you know, we do need someone to cover that, but at the same time, like, this needs to be resolved sooner than later.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me is that when, and I understand that, you're right, Kyle. I mean, obviously, that's, those are, that's really important. My concern is, though, that last year, we had three people in the I T Department, and we agreed with the administration to add two positions. So we're up, we were up to five total positions in the I T Department. We, I believe the mayor did hire an additional, she did hire an additional person, Amanda Halleck, who I think is the Systems Administrator. So, and I think we just need to clarify, you know, or ask the question on why there's such a focus in the budget preparations last year, leading into this year, on cross-training, and making sure that if someone were to suddenly resign, that something like this wouldn't happen. I mean, we understand a transition, but you know, this hopefully could have been, or should have been something that, that they could have foresaw happening. And we wouldn't have to spend this money like this. But I think we need to clarify that. Again, my major concern is the open-endedness of the, of the contract.
And I think just to add to your point there, you know, the justification for those two extra positions, you know, included the cyber attack last year on the city's systems. And also, you know, the transformation into a new operating system, which is currently ongoing. So, you know, how are we, how are we doing in terms of that, too?
With that being said, too, that operating system is being maintained by, by this company at a, at a large amount of money as well.
Right. Okay, so hopefully, we'll get that, get some clarification on that by next week. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order here? Okay, all right. We do have fifteen minutes before our regular meeting, so we'll take a fifteen-minute recess, and then we'll come back at six-thirty and and start our meeting. Thanks, everyone. Everybody injustice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Let us also once again take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community and our country and throughout the world who have passed away and who are affected by the coronavirus. This pandemic has turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster? Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here, please dispense with the reading in the minutes.
Thank you. Third order, three A, Agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting Held April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Three B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, Reviewed March sixteen, two thousand twenty-one. Three C, Correspondence Received From City Solicitor, Dated April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, Regarding Appointment of Superintendent of Fire John Judge As The Emergency Management Coordinator. Three D, Streetlight Request And Approval Received April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, For Installation Of A Light At Eight oh five, eight oh seven West Elm Street. Three E, Controllers Report For Month Ending March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Do any council members have any announcements at this time? Or I'm sorry, are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I, just on item, item three C, I'm glad they're, they're appointing Mr. Judge there as the Emergency Management Coordinator. I, I know it was something that we knew was occurring or it happened, but I think some of the questions that came up over the last two weeks maybe prompted them to, to send that along. So glad to see that, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. I just want to commend the sixty students and staff from Marywood University. They teamed up with Gaddens and his crew and donated their time to help clean Naog today. Great job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
There is also a Naog Park cleanup, you know, it's open for the community this weekend. I believe it, it starts at ten AM and they're asking that everybody meet at ten at the community room at Naog Park by the pool.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, Mrs. Reed?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals, Marie Schumacher and Thomas Coyne.
Make a motion to accept public comment?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept public comment. Mrs. Reed, would you please read the comments to the record?
Thank you. The first submission is from Marie Schumacher as follows. Going into the sale of the sewer authority, all were aware the city held the MS four stormwater permit. The city has invested money in more than one contractor to study the issue. But for four years and almost four months, the city has been dancing around the maypole without proposing, let alone selecting a stormwater plan. How will the plan be implemented? Will it be in-house or through an authority? Is this foot dragging because it's an election year? And the city doesn't want us to know how much deeper into our pocket you will reach to fund the plan? If there's another reason, please share that reason. What is the date of the last request for RACP funding for the renovation of the municipal building? While on the subject of grants, I would like to request the city clerk keep a grant log that would provide, when requested, the date of the grantor's expiration, if any, and date awarded. It has been over two years since the city received the Highland Associates Report On The Condition Of City Hall And The Estimated Cost Of The Full Renovation. Thanks To Jim Lockwood And The Times Tribune For Reporting The North Washington Street Side Of The Building's Stained Glass Windows Are Being Repaired, But We've Heard Nothing From Council. What Is To Be Done With The Other Deficiencies Of City Hall And When? I am concerned about employees and perhaps the mayor's daughter health as the mold issue was raised in the report As City Hall Should Be Opening To The Public Even Without An Appointment Very Shortly. The second submission is from Mr. Tom Coyne as follows. Scranton City Council, Well, it's obvious we will not have a pool installed for a few years As it has been pushed to two thousand twenty-two at a minimum if the pool was agreed to and financed today. That being said, I would suggest going with the splash pad and getting it operational first. I know we have a vendor who is supplying plans for the build, but I am curious on the pads themselves, How many people will be bidding on supply of the materials? Can we split the project to pad and then pool versus slowing it by dual construction, splitting construction resources? Fresh water potable is preferred for splash pads and cheaper for insurance instead of recycled water. Insurance liability with recycling system, compounds due to bacteria, kids in diapers and running and laughing ingesting water. Kids faces go into the water and they drink, so fresh water is preferred. Try to keep a kid from drinking from a hose. Let's also consider in the project wastewater produced by the system. It would seem reasonable to install toilets and urinals that use gray water for flushing. The entire splash pad runoff could be collected and pumped into a holding tank that gravity feeds the toilets and urinals. This eliminates the water costs for toilets and urinals by reuse of the splash pad runoff. Cisterns have been used for this for ages and it may qualify for grants as it reduces water waste. The landfill donates one hundred thousand dollars a year for police vehicles, trash trucks, and any other equipment necessary for the health and safety of the city residents. I believe Naog Park promotes the health and safety of the populace. So it may be reasonable to use this as part of matching for the equipment of the splash pad. Please note the agreement for the donation was for the life of the settlement landfill. It was expected to be thirty years, but it is defined clearly as the life of the landfill. So the expected thirty years ends in twenty thirty, or based on capacity and possible expansion. As long as the landfill is open and operational, the city gets one hundred thousand dollars a year. Second, is city council agreeable to separation of the garbage funds to an account that is not commingled with the general fund? Are they willing to put in language to ban line item or any transfer of garbage funds to any non-garbage related expense? Trash recycling has been moved in the budget notes prior. Nothing prevents the movement of budgeted and collected garbage funds to be real allocated by line, assigning them anywhere else. Third, I understand the reason people want to speak at council and have a voice. The inflection words produce is much more than the context of dry text. Public speech can move people more than just words, and that is missing. Fourth, speaking of water runoff, I believe during the Wenzel administration pre-election, an improvement was approved for the Manuka section. I got this information secondhand from neighbors, but I have verified myself. On the, excuse me, on the thirty-two-hundred block of Oak Avenue, storm drains, cement, cement pits were installed and the runoff pipes were placed in front of people's homes. A number of months later, the city collected all the pipes and never installed them. This left large concrete wastewater drainage pit connected to nothing. One of my neighbors has issues with basement flooding, and I suspect it is caused by the large concrete basin collecting and saturating the ground in front of her house as it is filled days and sometimes weeks after rainfall. Instead of rainwater running off, it holds and saturates the areas around our property and water table and causes basement issues due to constant water pressure and infiltration. Someone needs to repair complete disinstallation. A fair bit of thirty-two-hundred Cedar Avenue water is pumped on Oak from home, some pumps running to the non-connected wastewater basins as well. Last, the obscenity ruling. You perched this on the Colt bus incident of long ago. That ruling was due to not wanting to allow atheist advertisement, but allowing secular. The amended obscenity change falls short and just removing the vagueness is not enough. The court also discussed Mr. McAndrew's obvious discomfort. The two thousand nineteen ruling by the US Supreme Court takes it out of your hands. The case Ianku versus Brenetti, pardon me, a First Amendment case about immoral or scandalous trademarks. The ruling stemmed from a trademark the Patent Office disallowed. A sign or doing business as is so close to a business trademark, it falls well into the ruling. The Supreme Court defended free speech Monday even for four letter words. Faced with a clothing line called, which I will spell, F U C T, the justices struck down federal prohibitions against granting trademark protection for immoral or scandalous material as unconstitutional. The vote was six-three in an opinion written by Associate Justice Elena Kagan. Chief Ju- Chief Justice John Roberts and Associate Justices Stephen Breyer and Sonia Sotomayor dissented. The First Amendment does not allow the government to penalize views just because many people, whether rightly or wrongly, see them as offensive, Kagan said from the bench in announcing the decision. Due to this, it is clear any enforcement of this section is a violation of federal law. There is not much to discuss, not just the struck section from city code, but the entire section. And that concludes this citizen's participation. Thank you.
Thank you. On the question?
On the question, just to answer, I think to, you know, partially answer Marie's question via, about stormwater is the one thing that has changed since we got our last update was the passage of the American Recovery Act, which does have certain stipulations in it that the money could be used for stormwater or wastewater or water or sewage treatment. So I think it's getting into that and how much money we could use from that because that would, you know, could hopefully be a big, you know, plus in terms of moving this project for, you know, stormwater forward.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? I want to thank Ms. Schumacher and Mr. Coyne for submitting their comments and questions, and we will attempt to get answers to those questions by next week, if possible. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so much.
Fifth order, five A motion.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Um, yeah, I have three comments. So, um, first I'd like to thank Mrs. Cipriani for getting back to me today. There were some complaints coming out of the West Scranton area about the inspections department and who was, who was taking the place of Mr. Liptai, who had retired. So she did get back to me rather quickly and, and let me know that there was a new replacement there with inspections. Secondly, I'd like to thank PennDOT for meeting with me and Mr. Mr. Donahue within the Arm Street neighbors and to Kyle and Lori for getting, well, as well as Kevin Hayes for, for getting that letter out to, to PennDOT and I'm awaiting their response. And lastly, I'd like to thank Kevin Hayes who reached out to the, the Parking Authority for me. After we got the two thousand nineteen audit, there was a adverse opinion regarding the the Scranton Parking Authority. So Mr. Hayes reached out to them to see what needs to be done there. And if there's a need for a possible audit of the Parking Authority. So thank you all for, for helping out with those issues.
Thank you. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments tonight?
A few questions or concerns I had were addressed in caucus, so I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Um, yes, just a few, which I'd also mentioned in caucus, but I'll repeat again. I spoke with the administration regarding some concerns about the speed of vehicles on Harrison Avenue and the lack of pedestrian safety for the crosswalks and they sent a request to PennDOT for a traffic study because it is a, a state road. So it's, you know, not necessarily something that they can do anything about, but hopefully PennDOT will be interested in performing that traffic study. So you get a better idea of how to increase the safety there along that road. I also received some questions, a request for updates on the Birch Street project, which I know that we've spoken a lot about. Mainly some concerns along the four hundred block of Birch Street and the eight hundred block of Cedar Avenue and the pave cuts that were done. We were told that there would be a permanent restoration sometime this month. And now I've received an update that tomorrow, weather permitting, that, that permanent restoration should be, should be completed, which is good news for the neighbors and commuters in that neighborhood. And then lastly, I express some concerns over just the lack of transparency in changes to personnel in City Hall. And, you know, that's difficult for us to, I think, keep track and of what positions are changing. And I wanted to make a motion to request that. We send a letter from council to the administration for a regular update on, on our personnel.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second on the question?
On the caucus, I agree. I mean, we had something, something similar at, at the school district where we would have a personnel report that, that entailed everything that that was mentioned earlier, even, you know, including retirements or, so I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
Yeah, on the question, thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I was also thinking the same thing. The monthly personnel report was, was helpful for knowing what was coming. And I think that might, something similar that might even, you know, cover some of Jess's concerns.
Very good. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion passes.
And that, that was all that I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
Uh, yes, I just want to thank my colleagues and everyone else who's reached out over the last week, congratulating us on the birth of our daughter Maggie. Both Mary Kate and Maggie are doing great and I'm just over the moon. I'd always heard people say that you never know love until you heard your, hold your first child. And now I know exactly what they're talking about. I wasn't here last week because of the birth of our daughter, but I, I want to take a moment just to congratulate Lori on her retirement. Over the last three years, your friendship, your advice, your institutional knowledge have just been invaluable on both a personal and professional level. Although you'll be greatly missed, I hope you, I wish you a happy and healthy retirement that's filled with time, extended time with your family and especially your grandchildren. And I just want to thank you for your service. Or, you know, you will be greatly missed. I don't know what we're going to do without you. Also, you know, I, I know Jess brought up the speed of vehicles and I've actually noticed that, especially on Piston Avenue and some of the side streets, you know, especially in South Scranton, going up and down the hills. It just seems like people are just going faster and faster. So hopefully we could get something going there, you know, not only there, but citywide, just looking into that. And especially with, I've been getting a little bit of complaints about ATVs, mopeds, dirt bikes that are starting up again. So hopefully, you know, the police department will step up some patrols there. I know, I believe Mark brought up the issues on Saint Francis Cabrini. I got a couple of those complaints. I believe you brought them up. I got a couple of those complaints. I believe he brought them up last week when I wasn't here, but there was also an incident there overnight. So Ms. Reed, if you could all, because I don't think we got a response on that too. So Ms. Reed, if you could look into see if, you know, there's been any progress over there. A few, a couple of times last year I brought up a complaint about a storm drain on the five hundred block of Emmett Street. We passed it along to the water company who said they were going to go out and fix it. I did, Ms. Reed did ask for an update on that and that should be fixed by the end of this week. Also, Ms. Reed, if you could send it, send a correspondence to the DPW Director, the part and the parks, the new Parks Director. I don't know exactly who these required, I mean, we're supposed to, I guess we got an email today that correspondent should go through the DPW's administrative assistant. So if you could just send it to them and then also copy the Parks Direct, New Parks Director and DPW Director regarding what the plan is for park maintenance this year. I know we are, you know, we're waiting on that park study that's going to give us recommendations to how to, on how to properly maintain our parks, you know, moving forward. But I don't think that's going to, you know, solve the needs for this year. So I just wanted to see, you know, what, what our maintenance plan is for this year to make sure our parks are properly maintained. And also is if there's any other, if we know if there's any other issues with any of the other city pools and if that's going to, you know, affect their openings. And then also on that point is, and I'll put all this in the email to you too, but how we're making out in terms of hiring lifeguards. Because I know in the past we've closed down pools, not because of the state of the pool, but because we didn't have enough lifeguards to properly man the pools. And then one other issue and it's one of my pet peeves is, and since we're in political season is political signs in right of ways and on city properties. I know in the past EPW has gone out and collected the signs for the candidates to pick up down at DPW that are on right of ways. So maybe if we could just send correspondence to the administration, DPW Director, if, you know, they plan on doing anything like that. Because usually what happens there is they put them out and then they don't come and pick them back up and it just looks terrible and it's, and usually it's employee, you know, in entrance points to the city, whether it be on the, you know, the Central Scranton Expressway or on the McDade Expressway and places like that. It's just not a good look coming in. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Just one, one thing, actually two things. Mrs. Reed, do we get a response from our request last week regarding Mr. Young's property over on Wyoming Avenue?
I don't believe so, Councilman Donahue. I'll go back through my emails, but I don't believe so. I would have forwarded that.
Okay, can we just follow up on that? I, you know, I know we mentioned it last week and Mr. Young had submitted comments on it, so if there's any way that we can help him out, that would be, or the administration could help him out, that would be great. The second thing I wanted to mention, and we all discussed this in caucus, was the fact that the mayor had issued an emergency declaration, hiring a company called Bedrock Technology in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to fill the gap that has been created by the resignation of the Network Systems Manager Frank Switnicki, who used to be the IT Director. So it's come to our attention that the IT Director position has been vacant for quite some time. So I know the council has some, some concerns with this. So I have the following questions that I'd like to pose to the administration and if we could have these answered by next week. So the first one is how long exactly has the Director, IT Director position been open for? We do know that Frank Switnicki, who was the longtime IT Director, moved into a Network Systems Manager position. So that's the first question. The second request would be a copy of the contract with Bedrock Technologies. Number three, I think we need to know a timeline or what the plan is in terms of, you know, what, when the city is going to hire an IT Director, Director and a Network Systems Manager, how long they expect this company to, to perform the work? Does the administration expect the contract with this company to cease when an IT Director and a Network Systems Manager is hired or is there a period of time after that that they plan on keeping them on? How will the current employees within the IT Department work with this company? What will the employees be responsible for? What will their duties be now that this company is coming on and will be doing the work of the Network Systems Manager? And I'm not quite sure what else because we don't have a copy of the contract in front of us. The next question I have is how is the administration, the mayor and her administration planning on paying for this? What account are they paying this, this, these funds out of? I know that the professional services budget in the IT Department was large and that was going towards the hiring of Open Gov, which we, the city executed that contract a few weeks ago after we passed that legislation. So there are these things I think we need clarification on. My concern, as I stated in the caucus, is that twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for a whole year, that's three hundred thousand dollars. And this is, it's open-ended and I just want to make sure that we, that the administration has a plan in place and can, you know, let council know what that plan is so that we don't have, you know, this company in for months and months and months and we're, we're shelling out a significant amount of money because someone resigned. So that's all I have this week. This is Reed.
Thank you. Five B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number is noted, entitled Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation Weston Field Grant for the receipt and dispersment of capital grant funds from the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation Incorporated.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five be introduced into, be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I have three questions regarding this legislation. Mrs. Reed, if you can reach out to OECD, I'd like to know how much money is currently in the Weston Foundation Trust? How much money does the city receive from the trust annually and if they can give us a few examples of how much money's been used or given to the city in the past and what that money has been used for? Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Connell Park Rehabilitation located at Connell Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? On the question, I, and this goes for the next two pieces of legislation as well. I'd like a copy of the actual grant application. Usually in the past, when council has passed this type of legislation where we're executing and we're, we're approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city, we usually always receive a grant application that goes into great detail on what the project entails, drawings, things like that, that have been compiled in order to submit the application. So I would make that request before final passage next week for this and five D and five E. Also, as I mentioned in the caucus, it states that the grant application was due to DCNR April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's my understanding that the grant application has already been submitted in order to comply with the deadline. I would like to double check on this though, because I, I believe in the past, council has always had to pass the legislation first and then the grant application was submitted. I could be wrong on that, but I just want to double check. I know with, even in the past few months, as I stated earlier, council or the administration rather, has come to council with a grant application and an emergency declaration attached in order to get the grant application in on time to DCNR or whatever other program they were going for. So I want clarification on that. And that's all I have on five C. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five B for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of a grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Naug Park Swim Complex located at Naug Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? On the question, as I stated in the caucus with this one, I just would want clarification. It's not clear from this legislation what option the city was going with in terms of all the options that were presented by the, the pool consultant, MKSD, which came to us twice within the last two months. So I just would like clarification on if the city is definitively choosing one of those options that was presented. I think council would like to know that. And also it states that the city's committing a three-point-one-million-dollar cash match to the project. I'd like to know where that match money's coming from, what account it's coming out of and what the plan is there, how they're going to get their hands on those funds. And that's all I have on five D. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five E for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Weston Park Rehabilitation located at Weston Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. I can't.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, file of the council number sixty-five, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD two thousand twenty-one Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Program, Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January one, two thousand twenty-one.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption, file of the council number sixty-six, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the city of Scranton to approve the designation of Third Avenue as one-way northbound from Elm Street to its intersection with Broadway Street with the installation of two R-five-dash-one do-not-enter signs at the intersection of Third Avenue and Broadway Street. Our six-dash-one L horizontal left one-way signs shall be installed at the intersection of Third Avenue and Regan Place, Third Avenue and Fellow Street, Third Avenue and Luzern Street, and Third Avenue and Broadway Street, along with no parking designated on the easterly side of Third Avenue from Luzern Street North to Broadway Street and that's six, our eight-dash-three no-parking symbol signs, four with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking arrow plaque, one with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking left arrow plaque, and one with R-dash-three-zero-one no-parking right arrow plaque be installed under the direction of the city engineer to allow for improved access from Third Avenue onto Broadway Street.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of seven B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the committee on public works for adoption, resolution number one fifty-three, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the acceptance by the city of Scranton by Keystone Sanitary Landfill of a John Deere Bomag BW Asphalt Roller. Number is noted per Sourcewell Contract, number zero-three-two-one-one-nine dash BAI from Five Star Equipment.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As the Chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just, I'm looking forward to seeing this put to use over the summer.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number one fifty-four, two thousand twenty-one, appointment of Pedro Inez, five-five-five Seymour Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-oh-five, to serve as a member of the Scranton Sewer Authority Board effective March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, for a five-year term that will expire on March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. Inez will replace Larry Bocadori, whose term expired on December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Inez. I had the pleasure to meet him several times and have always had great conversations. So congratulations to him.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to also congratulate Mr. Inez. I've also been in his company a few times. I think he'll do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Um, I, I as well would like to congratulate him. We served on the Human Relations Commission together and sure that he will do great work on the sewer authority.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven D legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number one fifty-five, two thousand twenty-one, appointment of Brooke Newhart, three-thirty-one Ferdinand Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-oh-eight, as Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Scranton, effective March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seventy.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seventy legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, old business, nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would, I would just like to make, I, I was mistaken before when I said- I would, I would just like to make, I was mistaken before when I said we didn't get, and I apologize that we didn't get an update on the issues on St. Francis Cabrini. Mrs. Reed was kind enough to forward me that and I did realize that I just missed that in my email. So I do want to apologize for that. We did receive an update on that.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, Cal.
Sorry, as well, as we're saying that, I did, this afternoon while I was speaking with Ms. Cipriani, I also inquired a little bit about the property and she sent a, an email that I could forward to the rest of council. Probably after two-thirty today. So I'll forward it to the rest of you guys after the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a nice week.
Thank you.